Answer any questions you have or search first I want to. Thank all of the municipalities. Who in your D P W staff responded to the most recent storm. This time here. Almost. So. All of our staff. We need to. There's a lot of interest in some grant applications. Just as a reminder, can we find can be made for those days. Which one's first? Uh so. And there's the trip program. Which the deadline was this past April. So yeah, total twenty six applications. Three three million hours. So initially we participated in three dollars to achieve. Thanks to the effort of representing the reform. That's all. Able to be distributed. So that does help a lot. So. It's. So. Give the word. Then uh you just when we do those trip reviews, it's gonna be based on. readiness to be. For making sure that we work. Next years. When you're some. But in some cases, you know, we often use this. Base. Up here. On other version of those problems. Um and I think the only other thing I'll mention is related to the. A storm event that we just had. One thing that we are definitely. On this screen. Change this. This called. Times which is. Very long back to them basically between city and transportation. Um so we are trying to work with the local administration to. Hopefully we can use those funds to do active mitigation. Studies. Many of the culverts. Very, very old, undersized. Here's the other deputy. Okay. And so. So she comes from Maysville government chief. City. He is. Some city even. Karen, which one comes from South Transit Seattle, so she's all the way out here. Uh to communicate is where we find out, so we're excited. So we're trying to talk to Federal Highway. Do some of those.
Um proactive. Investigation of the actual culverts. One, we have to identify where every culprit is. Um but when we built many of these culverts seventy five or four years ago. We didn't track them. It was just a general, a culvert somewhere in Syria. So we're coming out when. So we have to identify every culprit we have. Um we have to do inspection with a camera to figure out what the condition is. Many of them are corrugated metal pipes. When they went in, the bottom half of them is completely disheared. Pressed out. Which is leading to a lot of failures. So putting in place. Precast free smother form. Culvert that will last much longer and have to be the right size for the new rain. All events that we're going to encounter for the future here in Connecticut. I think it's gonna become more and more frequent that we're gonna see what we have just encountered. So and that's gonna be a big focus of ours as we move forward. We built a new sustainability and resilience unit. Uh which is gonna be focused on that effort. So. So with that, um I'm sure you have a lot of questions on things that I did not talk about. So I'll stop there and see if there's anything that Northwest Hills Cod has as a priority or any of the CEOs have.
I have one.
Sure.
And uh. I just learned this morning. Communication is key for a lot of us up here in the Northwest Hills, getting out information quickly. And I don't know if this falls under your purview, but um I was in early this morning, started getting a number of phone calls that. Lake Road Route forty five is closed between Warren and two two in Washington. Any kind of situation like that, if there's planned, if we could be alerted ahead of time so we could get ahead of that. Um like I said, I started taking phone calls this morning, so I went down, checked it out. Um it was closed, but only a very small section of it, but they put up a barricade all the way up at the intersection of Woodville and Lake. And I understand why for truck traffic. Um but we took a lot of calls. It affects EMS, fire response and situations like that. So anytime, you know, communication is key. I could get word out ahead. You know, I appreciate the response time fixing what they got to fix after the weather event. We all get that, you know, communication.
Yeah. If it's a planned project, that communication should be occurring well in advance. Um you know, our district maintenance team should be in contact with your D P W folks. Um or you to let you know that's gonna be happening. Um in an emergency, that communication still should occur instantaneously or shortly thereafter. Uh but I'll. We're gonna be stopping down and spending the rest of the day in our district office with Doug Harris and B Casey. So we'll talk to them and just remind them.
Yeah, it's, you know, we appreciate it. It's just good to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have uh just one question. We had an issue with Route seven and we called. Troop B and uh they called Connecticut Doc to get that closed. And it was never closed and I almost saw one car. Yeah, cuz we had about a foot of water coming over the road there. Now, I know that that's a main girl fair and you wanna keep that open. But uh. As I was traveling through and 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 my car car in front of us almost got the. Wiped off and went off the road and started to float. And then, yeah, very. Very, I came very, very close to going off the road. But we never got a response. And uh. You know, if they wanted to keep the road open, that was great. And then after the water receded, they put up a sign saying water.
Yeah, so I don't know about that instance. It could be one of two things. One, it could have been. The delay for us to get out there, right? Because it was, we called people in to respond to the emergency uh on the weekend and the main focus was Norfolk. Uh because the road is completely um gone essentially. Um couldn't let anyone travel. So by the time we got out there, it probably was dried up or there wasn't as much water on Route seven, which our team probably then. Put up the sign preemptively just in case. Um but I'll make sure to talk to them again, uh similar to figure your situation. Just remind them. You know, in this instance, you need to be able to communicate back with municipalities. And it may have been, what may have happened is we may have communicated back to the true, to the true. And assume that communication would have gone back and it may not have occurred, so.
But it didn't, yeah, so. Yeah. I just wanted to bring that.
No, this is this is the type of act after actual report we do. Uh after we call them a hot wash after an event, right? To talk about what went wrong and what went right, so.
No other doubts, but it was, we had to postpone all our meetings cuz no one could get to the center of.
I have a question. I'm done. Um so with the turnover at um. At the at DOT, you know, um is there a plan to to help municipal leaders identify if they have a problem, whatever it is? Who to now contact? Because what I find myself doing is is finding uh other people in other departments saying, now, who is the person I need to call? In order to get this problem solved? There's not a direct chain, you know, for us to, especially for new leaders, you know, that may not have that, you know. Historical connection.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So, you know, your D P Ws or your town engineers, um they should know who to contact in their local garage for the D O T. Um or for the district. Um and if they don't, just let us know. Um there should always be that close working relationship there. Um for you at the municipal level, like the leadership level. Um so there's Pam Cicado is the new head of policy intergovernmental affairs for the agency. Um Kevin um is the supervising planner in charge of the intergovernmental affairs unit, which is. The main point of contact between the Cods and you as a CEO of the town. Um and Grayson is uh you know, the liaison here to this kind. So um you know, Kevin, after this meeting can send out the emails and phone numbers for, you know, Pam himself and Grayson. So everyone has that. And if for some reason, like your D P W or your engineers having problems getting in touch with our district maintenance folks. You can always escalate up to Kevin um and Grayson and they can get back to you. But you know, higher level issues, policy issues, you have, you wanna talk through a problem, you know, Kevin, Grayson, Hamer, your folks. Or obviously.
I do have one more question. Um how far in advance would we know, let's say in Litchfield, uh the paving schedule? If you're planning on doing two oh two over, which um is, you know, showing signs of decline and the crosswalks are. Are really needing re- we uh striping. Um how far out do we get notice of that?
So there's two different paving programs. There's the vendor in place paving program, which is done by, you know, with state bond funds. Um and it's main, our maintenance team uh participates in that. And we. The way we determine the paving program is we actually have. Uh a crew that goes out in vans and uses LiDAR and other sensors and measures every square inch of pavement every single year. Um and they use that to prioritize all pavement statewide based on condition of that pavement. Um using like things that the human eye can't see. Uh so they plotted out over the next, they try and do several years in advance. What that schedule of replacement will look like or resurfacing will look like. Um but then it will be re-prioritized based on emerging situations. So it should be a year or two in advance. We should know when we're gonna do two oh two. The way that we're trying to do it now is to give at least a seasonal advance notice um to every municipality. So we can pull that for you too. I think you all.
Yeah, I um I know that at some other Cogs, I don't know, it'd be great if it maybe could be set up here and work with Casey, but um. We had received notice also of the V I P pavement improvement projects. And um that was helpful because then we were able to, and there's typically, I I don't know if in these towns, but a local traffic authority gets um word of it. Um but it was helpful also to have the Cog got word of it so that um you know, we could inform the communities. And also you mentioned crosswalks Denise, but you know, some of the roads um in some of the other regions, some of the towns were interested in having bike lanes put in or other types of striping. And to know in advance, that's a really good.
Right, exactly. If you wanna change striking, you know, that'd be the time to.
Yes.
Talk about it.
Yeah, exactly.
So maybe we could have that set up and. For our region to get notice of the, not just out to the L T As, but the the region.
Yeah, I should do it. Yeah.
So I was really glad to hear that that you're working, trying to get some federal access to upgrade the culverts cuz part of. Part of the problem down in West Cornwall is we have hillsides um above the village and then the rail bed is level going through there. But wherever it's elevated, it with undersized culverts, it acts as a dam. Then when it overtopped the rail, when it overtopped the rail bed, it it cut loose and then washed into the town roads. Yeah, but before it overtopped and it flooded out. Um properties and houses in the village. So we have had a very good. Um response with D O T. Uh engineers were out there, their supervisors were there, working with the railroad, trying to not only put the railroad back, but the town back. So the town forces working with railroad. And and trying to restore, getting access into the people's property. So it was a very good working relationship and everybody agreed that there needs to be like a hydrological study of what's going on. Because the 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 drainage feature underneath the bed that washed out was original to the. Original construction, the rail bed, which was eighteen forty five. So that withstood a lot of storms, but this was the one that got it, even though it's not a named storm. So we're clearly seeing what you're saying, that these structures that might have been good for a hundred and fifty years are failing. Right now and it's having property stuff. So again, there needs, and I I think there were D O T drainage people out there looking at that.
Yeah.
We saw it gotta go up the hill to see what's happening and map it all. So that seemed to be good. Uh the other can, the other areas we're working on is trying to get more, a couple of E V charging stations. The fast chargers on Route seven at two locations. So we need uh whatever there are state funds available cuz if we went to some workshops that we were black hole, which is fine, but we're trying to. Get out of the black hole, so. If that, and then when we get that set up, I know, is is there a paving schedule for like Route seven? Cuz there, that is in really bad shape. I mean, if we get our chargers to cars and get feed up getting.
Yeah, we'll have to check me back here. I don't have the paving schedule with me, but um Kevin, are you good um with setting up a process where we can get them that in advance? Yeah, we can do it.
Great.
And then um just on the point about the the culverts and everything. So one thing just to keep in mind. Um so during and after the storm, we were talking about a lot of the damage, you know, for Norfolk was on local roads, right? And many of the local roads may not be built to federal standards. Um and understandably so, very low volume. Um it's more expensive to build to federal highway standards. Um. And anytime, so anytime that you're gonna use federal or state funds for a repair. It's gonna trigger you as municipality, having to go through and adhere to federal and state standards for reconstruction. Um and that includes water man, flood management certifications through DEEP, which if you used local funds, you wouldn't have to comply with. Um so that's the type of discussion that, you know, I think you wanna have internally. We can talk to you about the pros and cons of each individual unique circumstance too. Uh just because flood management certification process complying with Army Corps of Engineers. Uh permitting is very. Not fun, as anyone here who's dealt with it knows. Um. So that's the type of thing where we're talking internally and actually Representative Horn has reached out to me too. She wants a conversation about how we can. Better support of many of you all smaller local governments that may not have the the engineers on staff or the hydrologists on staff. Um and so while we may not have funds to help with reconstruction of many of these directly, we can maybe provide some technical expertise. Um provide some mapping or some hydraulic analysis. Um and and then be able to have the conversation with you all about, okay. You know, there are no, you know, here's what we think you should do. Here's where, what we think you should do next.
Is is there sort of a sense of urgency in the state to try to do this? I understand you get it, but then I've talked to other people in the field that say, once this hits D E P, it's gonna take. Forever to get a permit to discharge into the Zutonic River, even though that's where the water is going now. The only question is, is it gonna have railroad ties and people's front yards in the water that goes in Uzatonic? Or can we actually get a good emergency management plan expedited to make this happen? Cuz you can just see how it could just grind.
Yeah, no, it's just nothing. It's true, I, you know, we are talking too deep about that a lot. Um we are um we have a good working relationship with them now.
Right.
Um they are staffing up their permitting team. Um just like we were trying to re-staff after last year's retirements. Uh and uh you know, deep. We're having quarterly meetings with their permitting team, their uh L word, it's called Land Water Resources Division, which covers the permitting for for water discharges. Um and uh and so it's, it is a struggle. Um you know, they are a regulatory body, but they understand that urgency and especially the need to ensure they permit projects that we don't wanna leave federal money on the table. And we don't wanna create an emergency situation. So they are, Pusher Dykes is aware and she's, she's trying to streamline it as much as possible. Really great. I would just, um first of all, thank you for coming out. Sorry for being a little late to the meeting, but there's a lot of construction going on all the way. The years, so between local and state, so. Um but there's a, just a couple of comments and I understand there's a lot of turnover we're due to, but just some concerns, you know, like. Sending out emails to the town, so the email, the emails came out this year for um, you know, our road inventory lists and stuff like that. They were at least to Harwin, then they were sent three times. Four different, three times, three different people. Then the fourth time, we finally got a person and they all four times wrong password. So we couldn't comply with the timeframe that we had to turn it in. Finally, I had a call. Finally got somebody. Finally, they got me somebody else. Then they finally emailed it over and said, I think this one worked, still didn't work. Finally got it, we just got it in last week because the password finally worked. So when the emails, wow, you know, when you get the new people and it'd be great to have the right passwords to get into stuff. Because for us, we're we're small town, we have low staffing and um, I mean, just this year alone, we spent probably just between last year and this year. You know, close to eighty grand on engineering, just to apply for grants. Um you know, and that's a lot for a comment to take on and um. The one of my, the only thing, I don't wanna take up too much time because. You don't have, I don't expect you to have anything off the top of your head cuz you got a big plate. So um but one of the things I would love to get a response back from D O T on is in Harwin, then at least. Um there's three state highways, one eighteen Route four, two twenty two. Um one Route four to, from Burlington out to Farmington was all paved, but from Harwin to Burlington has been falling apart. Center Hill's been falling apart. For years, in fact, every year you guys, uh the state comes out, D O T comes out. When they plow in the in the winter, in fact, this winter, Harwin laid a lot of sand on Center Hill because we could not. Um get off Center Hill and it was the delay in the plow trucks, we had now and everything else. But um you rip off, they rip off the covers that they put in on the part of potholes. So then we deal with the potholes all winter and the edge of the road is falling off just past the bridge um there. And um our guys have even helped out and put some stuff down, help protect things until someone can get out there for D O T. So those three routes, I'd like to have someone just follow up with me, talk to me about those, cuz there's other stuff going on with them and I don't wanna waste time here. Um the last thing is, we have a bridge that we built four years ago. It's, we can't get the project closed. So that I can move the money and use it for other bridges. Um I I can't get anyone from D O T to sign off on it. Every time we call, um they tell us it's 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 higher on the ladder or. One of the emails we got was, it's above my pay grade, I can't sign it. And we're waiting. Then the other email I got was, it's in the higher offices, they're waiting to sign it. They're waiting to land a group of them. I'm like, well, people have been traveling across this bridge for four years, so if it's unsafe, I'm sorry, then are you guys gonna take the responsibility for it? Yeah, you know, because I mean, it's just a small little rule. It was on a scenic road, their road. Um that we had to put it on and it was, it's overbuilt for the road as it is, because we followed the local bridge program guidelines and everything else, but. Um and uh it's just, okay, can we get this closed? Cuz I've got two more bridges coming up and I've got an outdo. And I'd rather than tax a million five to my residents, I'd rather, you know, per bridge, I'd rather take the million five. From each project that I have stalled standing and move that money over to the other bridges. No, I'm on that final one. Charlie and I have been working on one of his projects for seven years. Um so. I got you by three. So the photo, it's not tied to whether it's safe or not, it's tied to the physical side, ensuring physical compliance, right? Because then otherwise the auditors come after us. Um and but that kind of delay is not acceptable, so. Um just send me the detail, I'll give you my card after you, I think you already have my email, but it hasn't changed. It's just first name dot last name at C P dot gov. Um send me the details on which bridge and then we'll get you um uh get that moving. Um and then we'll make sure someone calls about eight one eighteen four two oh two. I mean. I don't know why or what what Route.
Two twenty two.
Two twenty four, yeah. So it it may have been that segment was not resurfaced because there is problems with the embankment. They need to do more reconstruction. Um I don't know why, but that might be a reason why it's not part of the V I P program. But what we asked, I know one eighteen and our section of four were not on any list yet. And it was frustrating for us cuz even one eighteen is starting to fall apart. We have all those accidents down on, you know, I mean, we're down there daily, two, three times in the afternoon. As you probably well know too, that we're down there daily between Route eight and one eighteen. But I understand one eighteen, I believe we got notification one eighteen is gonna be on the paving list two years out. So cuz I got a response back, there's like a rumble strips down there on the sharp S turns. That are really bad, that people getting their mail and stuff, they have something to wake drivers up or just remind them that they're going off the road. You know, so um. But um and then the only other comment I'll make is that with, like, we're doing the trips, we're trying to do some trips work this year and um well, applying and stuff like that. But I think what we find as a town. And it's not just with D O T, I think it's the state as a whole, but um building to. Um the standards that you have are fine. The problem is, is that. Using the money only gets us so far down the road. And when you've got the rest of the road that's shot and we're not eligible for any more money for that road, it only gets us a certain amount of footage of the road. So people say, okay, you you paved and you restructured this part of the road. Cadillac. Okay, but you only got this much done for a million five, when the town could do it locally, build it probably to that standard, which we typically try to follow all the time. A million five and get the whole road done, plus maybe a side road. You know, so the the money just doesn't stretch far enough. And small towns like ours aren't eligible for any more money. So it it's hard for us to, you can't piggyback the grants, you can't, you know, state fund, state fund, federal fund, you know, so that you can try to save some money. If you wanted to pave the whole road, but if we wanted to do the whole road, say, to D O T standards. And say the product that we give for the trips money is a million five and it only gives me so many footage of road. And I've got like maybe. A ton more to do and I wanna finish the whole road so we get it all done in one shot. Can't piggyback anything on that. And you can't even apply for any more money to try to get more of the road done. Um so I think that's the frustrating part, at least for a small town that has, you know, no grant writing staff or, you know, lawyers on staff or engineers on staff. It's it's very frustrating for us that even corporate money does for the engineering, but just, and then you add. Being frustrated by the residents saying, okay, well, you could, you've got all this money, you got a million five, we have to go to town meeting to get approval to even use the money. So we get the, you know, use the money for that and then right now you're going to be somebody beating, they're like, that's all you did, you know? Yeah, no, I get it. I mean, but. So if there was more funding available or. Well, so, yeah, I think before you came in, right, I said. Um we expected only five million, Representative Horn increased that to ten million. Um so ten million um out of thirty three million applications. So um we're gonna do the best and cover as many as we can and we're gonna want projects that are ready to go. Um but it has to be built to our standard. Um you know, it's just. We have one standard for the state, for our projects, for statewide, for state roadways. If you're gonna do work using state funds, unfortunately, you're stuck doing to those standards and. Um. So I get that residents are frustrated and you're the ones that are on the front lines answering those calls um at home every day. Um and I get that, but um the alternative is. We don't give out any money and we let the roads continue to degrade. Um it's, local roads make up the bulk of our state. Um and so we need to, you know. Town eight road doubled uh from thirty million to sixty million uh several years ago. But I know up here, you don't get much of that.
We don't get any, we didn't see an increase. In fact, they got a decrease.
Well, it, yeah, I mean, back, it used to be thirty million and then I think in twenty fifteen, it doubled up to sixty million total, right? So um but for you, that's not.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, you're.
No, you you could continue with inflation, right? And I think that's what for us too at D O T. We have the big infrastructure bill. Everyone thinks there's five point four billion dollars to spend in Connecticut. Well, let's just like level set expectations a little bit. Um. The five point four billion dollars, the way the federal government works with transportation is there's a federal reauthorization that occurs every five years. So what they did is they took what we were gonna get anyway. And then just added a little bit more on top. And it's a good amount more. It was about forty million dollar increase total, but it's in specific pots for specific things. And then we had inflation. So they eroded away what we were able to do with the money. And then we had a huge retirement surge. Um and so, you know, and there's no workforce. Uh I think every business you talk to in your community probably says the same thing that we're encountering, where the applicants aren't there anymore. Um and the construction industry is seeing the same thing, the private engineer firms are saying the same thing. So all of us are struggling, so. Um I think, you know, I'm stuck with the. The these great expectations is how much, how far this money is going to take us. Um and I think it's it's gonna be great that we have funding for the next five years.
Um, and I think it's, it's going to be great that we have funding for the next five years, but it's not going to be as much as everyone expected, unfortunately. Um, but, you know. Happy to talk when you have a project that you think maybe we can stage it. Uh, tie it to say, hey, I want to do this project. I don't have any local funds until next year to do this segment of the road. Can we maybe wait a season to be able to time together, get them done together? You know, we're happy to have those conversations to try and be flexible.
Thank you. There's one thing too, one thing that's worked really well this week. Is having that equipment from our equipment cooperative that COG has. Because I know Norfolk's used it. Warren just brought some equipment down to Cornwall today. So having that equipment there that especially when town crews, you know, can swap back and forth with an operator has been really invaluable, especially this more rain forecast. So just. Again, to give some good news, having that stuff there in the back pocket is, and have it out here and. Available so people can go boom, boom.
Right. So you all don't need to buy the same equipment and have it sit for most of days of the years and.
We have two people online that have their hands up though. I just.
We should have a spirit meeting.
You're like the first on my screen there. So do you mind? And then I, Todd, I see you also.
Thanks so much. Commissioner, thank you first of all for coming with your Kevlar vest to, um, this meeting and sitting and listening to all of us. Um. And I will try to be brief. We have a project. Um, it's six, seven dash one, two, two, and it was, we broke ground, which means we pulled up all the asphalt. On fifteen hundred linear feet of, um, Bulls Bridge Road, which is a major pass through. There's a private school there. Um, and there were apparently some new issues with some, um, material samples that. Prior to the start, um, they met the standard, they met the spec, but then they did a couple of other samplings and they did not meet the spec. And that was. I think the beginning of April made, might've been mid-April, um, but here we are July twelfth and. Um, our residents have been driving on basically rip rap and, um, gravel since then. We had a meeting last week with a couple of D O T folks and our engineering firm, Cardinal Engineering. Um, there was another sample to be done and, um, as of today, we haven't heard. If that sample passed or not. Um, I have a lot of very angry residents that I get calls and emails and texts from. Um, at all sorts of hours of the day and to compound things and nobody can plan from other nature, but. Um, the rain over the weekend, um, caused a major washout in that portion. So we have. Um, you know, a problem on top of a problem. So, um, I don't know if you can. Um, hand this off to somebody to give a look in to, um, but I would greatly appreciate it and, and we greatly appreciate the, the grant money that. Um, you're able to provide truly, truly. Thank you.
No, no problem. Yeah, we'll definitely, um, follow up with the construction team on that and get back to you.
Thank you.
And then Todd was on, um, Todd, I think you had your hand up too.
Hey, good morning, Commissioner. Uh, and to the, the rest of the selectmen there, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not there. I got a class at eleven o'clock that I had to leave for. But to the commissioner, um. Rotary project in the center of town. Um, I got emails probably within the last six months that, uh, the state has received the federal monies to do the proj- project. Um. Uh, I got an email saying that it was a start in July of, uh, twenty twenty-three and then other emails saying July of twenty twenty-four. You know, just the, you know, the residents are concerned about the traffic in the center because of the influx of new residents coming in that do not. Know how to drive through a rotary. And, and plus the, um, the speed of the vehicles coming in, you know. Into the rotary. So, um, uh, you know, if you can't send me an answer, an answer, I can let my residents know and, um, you know, with this past storm. You know, Goshen is taking care of their own local roads, but. Questions from the residences, Route sixty-three, which is a state highway. Um, into five hundred mark of the road going north. Um, last year's storm undermined the highway where there was sinkholes and this, your staff came in and just patched them. Um, this past storm, it undermined, it's undermined the road again and they brought in gravel, but you know, the winters we have here in Goshen. Those, uh, that pavement's in a. Sooner or later collapse and we're going to have big holes in the middle of winter. So just wondering, the residents are wondering when. Um. That section of the road is going to be repaired. So we have a smooth travel in the winter. Um, you know, if you can't send me an email, I bet that'd be great. So I could give the, the residents of Goshen a, um, an answer on the rotary and the highway.
Yep. Uh, so I, I know on the roundabout, this is a project I keep asking my team about because I'm interested in it. Um, it. So it went in April, it went to our financial department for programming of funds. Um, which then there's, uh, it takes. A while for us to be able to program those funds, you know, you work with the COGS. Um, on stip amendments, um, and then, uh, but now it's already gone to the design team. It is, uh, already the work order is going in for surveys to go out and start surveying. Um, so you should be hearing. In the next month or two from our team about that, um, about, you know, what the specific timeline is now that we've started surveys. Um, so it is moving. Um, it's just we have, we're short a couple of hundred engineers, uh, which is leading to a backlog. And then I'll get you a follow-up, uh, with specifics on sixty-three as well.
Appreciate that, Commissioner.
No, I was just gonna, you know, I, I, everybody has their projects and, um, and the city of Trenton does as well, but. I just wanted to express gratitude when you say a couple of hundred engineers. Uh, when we were working with D O T for years to get those East Main Street sidewalks. Um, finalized with design and we have a team of engineers in the city of Trenton. So I want to express my gratitude because they're under construction. Um, you know, it's, uh, you use the phrase level set expectations. During this whole time period, that was every month what I had to do. When you're dealing with hundreds of property owners. Multiple dozens of, um, access points that are, you know, intercepting these, um, these sidewalks. Um, it's complicated. You know, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, so I just want to, um, uh, leave you with an expression of gratitude. Those sidewalks are happening or roving words. Um, and also, um, for D O Ts. Attention to the need for public transportation in the west corner. So with the recent acquisition. Um, of property, we know and I know one is speaking for, um, Mike, who's the chairman of the Christian's at board. Um, but we know that there's a critical need here and we look forward to working with D O T to. Uh, to build that, make that happen.
Yeah. No, absolutely. I think, you know, working with the, the whole board of Northwest Connecticut Transit District. Um, you know, I'm interested in expanding service, growing service. Uh, the most recent budget passed by legislature includes our proposal to. Increase service and a whole bunch of transit systems statewide. You know, N W C T B was not part of that because we want to work first, get the properties finalized, then do a comprehensive service analysis. I think Lisa Rivers from our team wants to work with you all to do that. To do a C S A for the region, figure out where we need to move routes, how we need to expand routes and grow routes.
Yeah, we're starting, we're starting that process now and it's, you know, right now it's us doing internal reviews.
Yep.
And then feeding that information back to Lisa, but it's been very helpful, great for that. So.
Chris? Yes, sir. Thank you very much for coming on from Coldbrook. We certainly didn't have all the damage in North like that, but. We experienced probably seven to eight inches of rainfall between Sunday and Monday. And initially every one of our dirt roads washed out. Fortunately, no, we had no paved. Uh, one of the roads, uh, so. Destroyed that is going to be a long time before we can. Get it reconstructed and it's designated as a wild singing grove. And I'm wondering what sort of help we could get there. Beach Hill Road is another dirt. Part of it, they're over using it as a major detour for the Sandy Brook Road project. Which I don't think in, that got heavily flooded from Sandy Brook. And the last time I talked to N G R, they were still waiting for the water to recede to see. And evaluate just how much that project got setback. But my biggest concern is we, we do have three bridge projects underway with someone. We're, we've started two. And although the submission of I S Ps have been made to. Turnaround and those are slow and I really. For the small town, a small budget, four and a half million dollars worth of three projects. We really need some help getting those. Processed quicker and I, and I know you're short in that. I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And with a small town, we're short in too.
Absolutely.
The other concern that I really have and I. I have called Trupi and I know they're short in. Rudy is our major route from Winston to Lee, Massachusetts. It very heavily traveled. And we have an accident on Rudy. A lot. And cars just absolute vehicles. Absolutely fly out and down to our town. There's one curve by Sandy Brook Road where hell's lumber is that really base. The biggest hit all the time with cars running off road or crashes. So I don't know. What sort of help they can give us, but.
Yes.
Speed limit, flashing signs. Rumble strips.
Yeah, we can investigate the, all this stuff. So we can come out and have traffic engineering, uh, look at the specific location. Uh, one thing I know the Yukon's T two center, I think they distributed all their supply of. Flashing speed, feedback indicators that, um, we bought from them. Um, we are talking about.
We do have.
Yeah. So we want to, what we are talking about is giving Yukon more money to do another round for municipalities. Um, uh, those are proven to slow people down subconsciously. They see that and they immediately. Will slow down because they instinctively think there's going to be a cop there.
I wish so.
Um, but yeah, we can, there are things like if there is roadway departures off of those curves, we can do things like high friction surface treatment. Um, some chevrons if they're not already there, the speed feedback indicators. So, uh, we can have traffic engineering. You and, and investigate that.
And I, I. I met with the, uh, commander of Trupi right after. She got the position. You know, we both told each other and failed to, well, hers was not enough staff. We need more. State police representation presence in the county because we didn't.
Yeah. You know, we, I mean. Uh, I have a great relationship with the state police with Colonel Malika. He actually used to be stationed up at Trubell for the beginning of his career. Um, and then Commissioner Ravella and we, we have the same. Complaints to each other. Both of our departments are severely short staffed. Uh, so, uh, we trade our field well there, uh, but they are valuable partners. I get a report of every crash and fatality on our state roadways. Um, it's just, uh. Depressing to say the least every day when I get those. Uh, so I know Commissioner Ravella does as well and it's. It is a major issue that we want to work together with all of you as municipal leaders to, to combat that. Cause last year was the worst year in. Over three decades on our roads. Um, so.
And then I'm right there with all the rest of you. I've got a bridge. It was the biggest. I don't know how many years ago, we're still carrying it on your books.
Yeah, send that to me.
I, I've talked to Mike Burns about it. Or Mark was around, yeah. That would be to send it to you.
Thank you. I really appreciate you coming.
Yeah.
And, uh, obviously we.
Oh, Tom, I'm sorry. All right. I got here late. Time wait kind of worse. Uh, and this is kind of widespread throughout the state. I imagine is the roadside mowing or the lack of. Yeah. Uh, it's a real safety issue, particularly at the intersections, the line of sight is greatly diminished. We end up mowing the roads for you because of that issue. Uh, is there anything you can do about it? At least at the intersections and also. Along the roads or spots where the vegetation actually leans across. The white line into the road. And so I don't know. Walker or bicyclist is supposed to get through there safely as well. So. It's as with everything else in our department, we're short staffed in our maintenance division. We're a couple of hundred people short. Um, so everything is delayed and backlogged. Uh, you know, in, you know, there's always a trade-off. Every single day we are faced with. Each of our garages is faced with the decision, do we send people out to do the resurfacing project? To staff the other construction projects in the, in their region. We go out and do, uh. You know, M S four cleaning the storm drains, which, you know, EPA mandates we do. Uh, do we clear? Do we mow? Trees are a major problem for us. And so we've been trying. To get as much money as possible into tree, uh, trimming and push that. Push the, the growth back because it's a safety problem, uh, for the release in the winter. But at least maybe the intersections, I'm not saying the entire road, but the safety at the intersections. It's like a North Shore Road and two oh nine.
Yeah, I have, yeah.
Yeah. So maybe nine, two oh nine, we had to mow it. Did you contact your garage and ask them to go out? No. So that's. Because we were told we're not going to mow until October. So we generally do twice a season, uh, just because of, we're so short staffed as in that. Um, so what I would say is if there are specific locations where you have a concern. Just have your, you know, reach out to your maintenance garage. Um, and we'll circulate that list. If you don't know who your maintenance garage is, um, just reach out and say, hey. Need this mode. Can you do that? Um, and.
Don't you say that.
So they. They, they work with you all. They, they know you are partners. Um, so they, but. They have to deal with the staffing limitations they have, but they'll, they'll work with you. If you tell them that's your priority to get done. Um, they'll try to get it done. I've been going out to garage every two weeks. I go to one of the garages to meet with the crews, trying to hit all of them in the next, in the first year and a half of the job. And, you know, they are all stressed, overburdened. Um, and but they take pride in these roads and the communities because they are residents of these communities, right? They are from here. It's not like they live in Newington and work in North Cannon. Yeah. They're a member of your community too, and they take pride in the work they do. So. Uh, if you tell them, hey, I need this to, can you help me out? They'll, they'll try to get out there. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you for having me. Obviously you can see that there's a lot of interest in, um, C P.
Hey, Henry, I have, um, one last question for the commissioner and I'm sorry for plugging on the end here. Um, we have, uh, obviously you probably know about our very, very busy downtown on, uh, North Main Street, which is route seven. And we only have one handicap parking space. And it's probably, um, I would say at this point, a quarter of a mile long and. We have a ton, a ton, ton of visitors and I've been asking how to, um, make a second or third. Um, spot available on Main Street and, um. I've gotten not pushback, but, um, I'm just trying to make forward progress to find out if we can do this and how to make it happen. What would be the best? Place to contact.
Uh, so Kevin and Grayson can direct that. Um, I think, you know, generally. The parking on our state roads, um, you have to just come through the department with the encroachment permit process. Um, so we can, Kevin and Grayson can connect you with. Uh, the appropriate people to, to look at that. And I mean, the problem for us on the parking on roads is, um, a new state law mandates, there has to be a significant setback from the crosswalk. Um, because. The problem is we, people are putting parking spots right up to a crosswalk. So an individual walks into the crosswalk. And drivers can't see them and then they get hit. So, um, we'd have, it will be something that traffic engineering would have to work with you to study whether it's safe.
Okay. Yeah. I was the bad guy here in Kent and we striped twenty-five feet on either side of every crosswalk that you've all allowed us to. We, we have made strides there because that is so dangerous that. When people park right up against it. Um, but maybe, um, one of the COG staff can pass along my email address. To, um, to your folks.
Yeah, we have, we have that.
Okay. That would be fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Ben, thank you for letting us take up so much time for your meeting. Thanks. Uh, and I left a stack of cards too. You are, uh.
My name is Nancy Reagan and I'm the. Executive Director of Rebuilding Together Litchfield County. Our organis- organization is one of thirty nine. Throughout the country. We will come in and do necessary repairs. For seniors, veterans. And people with disabilities. We do repairs and modifications. Uh, people will apply to us. We will determine eligibility. And then we do a home visit. We try to go through the towns for the permits. We ask the town to waive their fees for their building permits. But not all towns will. Our funding is strictly. Donations. And grants. Last year we were able to raise a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But we were only able to complete. Repairs and modifications on nine homes because of the cost of everything. Each year we have what's called rebuilding debt. It's a national. Thing and we will bring all volunteers in to do the repairs and modifications. Now each home we work on has a licensed insured contractor as what we call house captains. And they oversee all the work. I don't want you to think that we just send a bunch of volunteers out to do this work and people don't know what they're doing. They are trained. We also have our home improvement contractor's license. We are a charitable organization through the state. We were established in two thousand and three. Since two thousand and three, we have been able to do repairs and modifications on. Then two hundred forty seven homes. It seems to be getting less and less each year. What we would like to see is. I need to find handyman. For each area because we have a lot of small repairs and to have to hire a contractor for that. Number one, we spend a lot of money. We have to wait a very long time because they are booked or they just don't want to do the repairs. Like I said, we do use licensed contractors. We do the volunteer day one day a year. The rest of the time we have to hire contractors. We also have to hire contractors for electricity and heating systems. That we don't let any of our guys do. That's more of a specialty thing. Is. Safe, warm, dry homes. For people to age in place. We. Don't necessarily do cosmetic work. We try and do the necessary. And by that I mean we'll do walk-in showers. We'll do ramps, railings, roofs. Uh, one thing we're finding is that, uh, a lot of people contacting us for multifamily homes, we can't do those. Because they have the capacity to have rental income. Everybody has to be low or very low income.
What are those levels they have for loan?
They're set by the federal government.
Are you from the state?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We work closely with the USDA Rural Development. I worked there for thirty years before I retired. And so we follow their guidelines. The majority of our funding comes from them each year. We've been averaging between sixty and seventy thousand dollars from them each year. But if we can get some help with from the individual towns on some of these people. Uh, like I said, even just waiving the fees is a big thing. Because some of the, uh, permits are costing us hundreds of dollars. That's hundreds of dollars that we could be putting into. Repairs and modifications. I work out of my home part-time. I have a cell phone and a laptop. So we don't pay any overhead there. I have, you know, the bill for my cell phone. I use my own internet at home, so they don't have to pay for that. Uh, we do have some. Things that we have to pay for such as on rebuild day, we pay for food and drinks for everyone. We, uh. That's that's basically our budget. Is our home advertising. Food. I am the only one that's paid. And it's not much. But, uh, my job basically is raising funds and awareness. I would be glad to come to each individual town, talk to their social workers, talk to each of you. Uh, we'd like to get the word out. The repairs that we do and the modifications. Are on a priority, not necessarily first come, first served. We do priority. So we do have some people waiting for years. For new windows because someone else has a leaky roof. Somebody calls in the middle of winter. They don't have heat. So if you could keep us in mind, if somebody comes to the town. That would be great. We have a website with our application right on the website. They can complete it online, just hit submit. They can call me. I will mail. A lot of the seniors and people with disabilities we're finding are not, uh, computer savvy. So either myself or someone else will go out and assist. We also have a lot of the, uh, social workers in the towns assisting people with their application. It's not real complicated. It's very simple, straightforward. We need to know what repairs need to be done. And then when we look at it, we prioritize.
Good for property values then.
Oh, yes, yes, it keeps the property. A lot of the seniors mostly, uh, either don't have the financial means or the physical capacity. To do these repairs. And when we do these repairs and modifications, especially like when we put in ramps or, you know, front doors or and that type of stuff. We don't do it cheaply. We do it the right way. The ramps are all up to code. Uh, we we try and keep the homes nice for. The property values. I mean, uh, eventually they're gonna sell. Plus the towns, they don't want the, the, yeah. The light conditions, we help with that, especially on rebuild day. This past year, we do it the last weekend in April every year. We had fifty volunteers. So of course they couldn't all build that ramp. So we had them, uh, fixing siding, painting, cleaning the property and that type of stuff so that. People can have pride in their homes and the towns aren't on them or, you know, you've got to clean up your property. We had one property in Goshen that we used two thirty yard dumpsters to clean up the yard. But again, we have to pay for those. I live in Bantam and in Tennessee. I've been traveling back and forth.
I think you just work out of your house then?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we don't want to pay rent anywhere.
Cause I just looked up your website.
Oh, okay, yes. And it says Bantam. And yes, I work out of my home.
Yeah, you've done a house actually in Litchfield.
Yes.
Last year.
Yes.
Two years ago now, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, actually we did a lot of work at that house.
Oh, you did do a lot of work. I was, I showed up and.
That's right, you were there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did a great job.
That was a lot of the junk removal.
Yeah, oh, yeah, a lot of.
Yeah, yeah, we did the new roof because it had been leaking. This year, we went back to finish the job. By removing sheetrock in the kitchen that was had been damaged due to the roof leaking. And when they opened up the walls, there were no studs. So a job that was supposed to be. Between three thousand dollars, it's now eight thousand dollars. So, you know, we have to come up with that money and we don't. We don't commit to anything. That we can't. Fund completely. We don't want to leave somebody. I mean, that year it was just, you know, okay, the roof is done. We'll come back another year and finish the inside. You know? That type of thing. Uh, I got a call this morning. In Gosh from the Goshen Social Services. And they have a gentleman whose wife is not able to come home. From a rehab until there's railings installed. Now that's the kind of thing that I need a handyman for, not necessarily a contractor. Who is too busy and not going to be able to do it until fall. I need it done now. Which is. Happens a lot. And in Goshen also, uh, this past year. In April, we put in a twenty six foot ramp. For, uh, it was a single mom. She had a ten-year-old who's handicapped. And she was carrying him in the wheelchair up and down the stairs every time she had to take him somewhere. Uh, Torrenton, we've been doing a lot of work. Also on rebuild day, we had two houses in Torrenton that we worked on. We did a ramp at one. Uh, we did a complete heating system. Woman had a. Radiant heating and ceiling, which I guess was popular way back when, but it doesn't make sense to me. But we had to do a complete heating system, ductwork and everything. And that's fifteen thousand dollars. Of our funds for one person. I mean, we haven't even been able to get back in and do some of the electrical work that needs to be done. That house too, we had to do a whole new electrical system. Because it was still the screw and fuses. So we had to do a whole new electric. So I mean, that one job cost us almost thirty thousand dollars.
So Nancy, do you want from us, uh, if we have names of of handies that may be able to work with you? Is that's what?
That would be great. Uh, any funding that you might be able to help us with. I did apply to Litchfield and I applied to Torrenton.
For municipal budgets?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I know, yeah. But, uh, I also know like Bantam has a sunshine fund, things like that. I mean, anything helps. And volunteers help, but you know, we only do the volunteers on the one day a year. Because we don't have the licensed contractors that can work with them. Now, if there's a licensed insured contractor that wants to volunteer sometime, that would be phenomenal. Because then I can hi- you know, have them go out and do a job. Also, a lot of the contractors, if they will work with us in possibly giving us a discount. That helps a lot too. And, uh. We're also having trouble finding people like in the real Northwest, Canaan, North Canaan. It's not of our volunteers are formed from the Milkard. Brookfield. Torrenton. So it's difficult to get them to go that far. To do a room.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I do have, uh, some brochures, some pamphlets. Uh, anybody that wants them, I have ten of them. I didn't know how many people would be here. Yes, each one has, uh, a little presentation, has two of our pamphlets. It had, gives you an idea of what a twenty twenty three budget was, what we raised, where it came from. And where it was spent. And I also have a license of our contract, a copy of our contract. Charity. License. I didn't want to put our, uh. Contractors license in there, but if you need it. I'll be glad to provide it. I can provide our five O one C. Nonprofit status. If anybody needs it. You can contact me. Like I said, my name and number in everyone. I have my business card. I also have extra business cards, extra pamphlets. If, you know, you want a few for the town to hand out to people. I'd be glad to provide. I have a bunch of them with me today.
Okay, thank you for having me. I like to get the word out.
Yes.
That's important.
Um, I'm gonna, uh, just, uh, we have a quorum. Uh, so since we have a quorum, I will officially call the meeting. At eleven twelve, so we can vote on a few things. Uh, why don't you go through, uh, Casey with the step.
Okay, I'll very quickly. I mean, you have two amendments that are on the table. Um, one is for the West Chippenzon Road. Actually, it's attached to my name. They're just packing. Um, again, West Chippenzon Road in Burlington, which is new, uh, reconstruction project, which is funded by the rural nature by the program. And then we have another amendment for the rehabilitation of four bridges, which is in Tomston, Arlington. Um, out of those four bridges, three are located in Arlington. Which is Route eight northbound over Route two of two, uh, Bow Road, northbound and southbound.
Seth would make the motion. Is there a second to approve this?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chris, seconds. All those in favor?
And, uh. And assuming that it passed. Any objections? Or substitutions adhering on that pass? Emily, why don't you just give us a quick update on the, uh, Seds?
Yeah, sure. It's, um, very quick. Um, we did. Launch our public engagement effort yesterday, actually, yesterday afternoon, um, and evening. Uh, we have three, um, public charrette style meetings that, um, one of them again being yesterday, so there are two left. Uh, that we are, uh, working with a facilitator to get, um. Ideas on strengths, weaknesses, you know, opportunities in the region for economic development. And this process is to update our five-year comprehensive economic development strategy. So. That, um, process needs to wrap up at the end of this calendar year, so we're. Moving fairly quickly through that, but I think we had a great conversation yesterday, was lightly attended, so we're hoping, um, that maybe you all can help us with. Spreading the word to your economic, your local economic development committees, um, if you have those in town. Um, and I know, you know, um, I'm sure many of you did that when we sent out a reminder, but if you wouldn't mind, keep doing that. And asking them if they, um, would wouldn't mind participating. And we'd love to see any of you, um, that are. Available. I know the meetings have been, um, there for long timeframes, like four hours, but even if you can come, um, for just a little bit. And we're gonna work on tweaking that, um, going forward to to see if we can get a little more attendance for maybe a little shorter meeting. Um, but the meeting yesterday was great and then we are in the process of, um. Applying for the year two funds that, uh, are getting in all of our application materials and budget for. The year two funds of our three-year grant from EDA that we get for partnership. So. That will be hopefully wrapping up very soon and we will get our next installment of funds.
Pretty back in town. Is there anything else you need to vote on while you're? Yeah, I was gonna, uh, go through the other, uh, the only other two things that I think. Need somebody here are action from the regular meeting note minutes. And the approval of the financial statement for May and we could probably take those as one motion.
I'll move those.
Thanks.
I'll second. All those in favor that includes the special meeting events as well?
Yes.
Keep the water flowing, so.
So, uh, let's go get to John Fields. I don't see him.
See him on there.
All right, we should give John, uh. He, let's go to, uh, the municipal forum. Uh, anybody have anything that they would like to share?
The NBC is applied for a permit for abandoned ten billion gallons of water over. And they have worked with Northwest Connecticut. Land Conservancy. Several other land conservancy agencies. It's a big concern for me because. NBC takes about one fifth of our operating budget tasks. The permit. Is going to be acted on by the Department of Public Health and it's going to be the decision. Whether their NBC can abandon that ten billion gallon water supply. Or whether they aren't. Termined by the Department of Public Health. On the twentieth of July. Middle of June, I finally got a letter. Through the firm, we're a watershed, it's developed by the city and all of these land trusts. To put easements on about five thousand acres of land over. Which was a huge, again, is a huge concern because once you do that, then you wonder what the value of the property will be. But there is a state statute. Seems to protect us from them changing the tax. But they've asked New Hartford, Barhamstead, Hartland and Covert to support them in your request to have that ten billion gallon water supply determined and declared not a source of public water. I haven't signed it. And Maggie, if you're there, I don't know, I tried calling you yesterday to see whether you signed it. But, but anyway, that's one of the things that was going on in Covert right now. I'm, I'm concerned about. Plus our three bridge projects. I'm worried about the cash flow because I discussed with Mr. Weal, the back there, some ISPs that seem able to long turn them. And, um, this last storm wasn't kind to any of us in the northwest corner. Our washouts and flooded basements, flooded roads. And that whole route corridor is a big, big problem area for speeding activities. Those are my concerns.
Couple things to share. Um, last Friday, the courthouse was sold to Lex Litchfield Partners. It was just going to be installed in the next twelve, fifteen months into a, what they're calling a boutique hotel with twenty. So, um, there'll be some, a lot of construction area in, you know, in front and the back as they, they do that. Uh, we did get an EV grant from the VW settlement, hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to bring in six new, or we actually don't have any really, six EV car chargers to our municipal properties. And the twenty-eight Russell Street project, I think it drives through Litchfield, but it was the old railroad that was abandoned in nineteen forty-seven. They're, um, bringing that building back to look exactly how it looked, you know, back when they closed it. And, uh, they just got a caboose and they're going to have a, you know, it's going to be the hub of, of, uh, the, the greenway where people are going to start, they can park there and and, uh, start using our, our greenway in a safe manner. And then, um, just lastly, we got a WPCA, uh, solar project approved that's been starting, so that will save our, um, water push control about three thousand to four thousand a month in electrical costs. That's all I know.
The only thing that's going on in our town is we got an NRES grant to, uh, for all the public buildings to put up a solar, uh, farm. Which is now an inland wetlands and P and Z and, you know, it goes through the process. The other thing is we're telling our old firehouse in town. We're I know that we've got, uh, at least one bed we're opening on this afternoon and, uh, we have two new businesses opening in town, so, uh, it's, uh, progressing well for this little tiny village in Connecticut. I have nothing else, uh, to say. That's it. So hearing nothing else, my goodness.
Yes, Jean, sorry, I had to just, we just had a little emergency meeting about a DOT project that I was mentioning earlier. Um, we're, uh, this weekend, we are, um, implementing a composting and unit-based pricing program through a fifty-five thousand dollar grant that, um, HRA assisted us in applying for, which is pretty exciting. They've been amazing. Um, Waste Zero has been amazing, getting us, um, you know, just started to implement this, so it's very exciting. And a lot of road work and a lot of, you know, just different projects going on.
Uh, no, we did that in one motion.
It kind of came up just the, uh, billing for the equipment rental through the cog. Uh, we received, we received the, uh, invoice dating back to, uh, rental from twenty twenty-one. Uh, as you know, we all work on municipal budgets and we got fiscal years. And to receive the invoice that late, and I realized we went through a big changeover here. But I just, it's, it's crazy and it doesn't seem right. I hope in the future, these invoices come out in a timely manner. Perhaps within two weeks after rental. And also show some backup information of exactly how many hours, more days that this equipment was rented. That's my two things.
We can, um, state that, um, well, I do, I do believe from what I understand, I understand just a little, I know Rob's out today. But I do understand that I think an invoice went out, um, within the fiscal year, but we, it would be good to have. It would be, well, I think, I think it was, we, I'd like to talk to you afterward instead of, you know, talking through that at the whole meeting, but, um, I do think it had been received in town. Um, but in any event, um, I, you know, we have gone through the process since then and, um, we'd like to address a new way of, um, doing the whole system of rentals and invoicing. The current process seems a bit like, um, you know, that had been in place for a while, seems a little bit like it was ripe for some human error on either side. Um, and, you know, we definitely realized that in-house, so there is going to be a public works collaborative, um, equipment collaborative meeting coming up. We're working to schedule that. Um, and we would like to address potentially changing the system a bit so that we don't have, um, you know, human error on either side.
Cause I did ask at a previous meeting, an open meeting, if all the invoices have been, you know, if we're all caught up on the rental of this equipment, and we were told yes at that meeting.
Well, I, I think from our side, um, we, we did send out an invoice within the fiscal year that the equipment was rented, but it wasn't. And, you know, we did, we do acknowledge that we didn't follow up on it, but maybe we should discuss it also.
Tom, I'd be happy to speak to you after because
We have a document.
I think we definitely need to revamp how this stuff. Because you really need to show exactly what days and how many hours that machine was utilized by the municipality. So
Agreed, yeah.
So we can confirm that on our end as well.
Yep.
Eight days and it's, it wasn't eight days.
No, absolutely. There's room for improvement as we look at the system and, um, I think that there's room for improvement also in, um, the way we could document everything, the invoicing. So we acknowledge that completely and we will.
Yes, and I did have a really good conversation with Kyle. Um, I do have some things that I'd like to go over here with you. I typed up a new procedure because it's hard. I have no control. I have no idea who gets what when. So I'm waiting on public works department to send me slips. Sometimes I got handed a bunch of slips at once, just put them through. Um, but we, if you would like, I would love to speak to you about this. Let's go through and do, okay?
We'd be happy to sit down with you. Kind of clear it up, you know, it's, it, what is, 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 and we'd like to move forward and find a solution.
For those who are aware of, working with this, just so you know, if I could go over real quickly, the things I would like to do, the steps, it's four steps. Um, host town to send email to both Northwest Hills, to the cog and rental town with a copy of the rental checklist form. So I'm finding, um, with, with Kyle, he doesn't have records of the forms and I get the form. So I was under the impression host town, rental town and the cog all got a form. I'm finding that's not the case. Um, number two, number of days rented must be on the form. I can't even tell you how many times I've had to call and be like, how, how many days was this? Um, we'll create the invoice and then invoices will be mailed to both the rental town public works director and the appointed billing department for the rental town. So we do have a plan in place. I will, Casey and I were talking about, um, doing this meeting. I've spoke to some other towns as well. But I just want you to know, we are working on it and we see the flaws in the system, especially after speaking with Kyle and Jane. So I would love to chat.
But I think some, some of the issues too are not just solely in the cog. I think it's in the town as well. You know, not more specifically towns in general and communication with public works in general. I mean, as a first select with dealing with public works, you know, I have a good relationship with my director. And now we have a new director. He's trying to learn all the steps in between, you know, you know, who's catching on really fast. But, um, I think the communication could be better communicated from us as selectmen down to DBW. I mean, I'm OCD, so I make every department copy everything and I check their files once a quarter. And make sure that they're copying, they're up to date and it's a pain in the neck, but I do it because of my own OCD. Um, cause I always like that paper copies. I don't trust electronic at home. That's a lot of things, so.
Yeah, we need to all work together to come up with a good.
Yeah, I think if it, if it doesn't work, someone should speak up at that time. We'll go back and we'll look at it again. You know, everything's a work in progress and everything in between, we can have a process this year. It may have to be changed next year.
Yeah, yeah, just a constant.
And, um, one other thing I did do, put a reoccurring, um, monthly reoccurring in my calendar for work to email all the public work departments and say, like, what, do you have any billing? Do you have anything? E- even on, you know, to put it on the host, I mean, the rental towns too, like, okay, you know, you rented X, Y and Z. And if you haven't gotten billed for it, like I, you know, can you be proactive too? So it's just a way of being proactive all the way, all the way around where I can send it out monthly to everybody. And it, it's documented.
Yeah, so we're, we're confident we can do this and we have a good, a good team. So we're confident we can, we can.
We have the same, I mean, we have the same problem that reimbursed for the sweeper work that we did, stuff like that. But, I mean, it was on our end because it wasn't communicated. You weren't getting the proper paperwork from us. So you guys couldn't process reimbursement for us. And I was trying to understand and I'm arguing with every guy going, wow, I don't understand it. This is like six months old. Like this is nothing. It's batteries. What's the big deal? You know, it's a thousand dollar bill.
I believe that's all taken here.
It's awesome. Yeah, it was, it was taken care of in twenty-four hours after I got involved. So.
So, um, and here's the thing, if I don't know, I can't fix it.
Right.
So until it's brought to my attention, I can't address it. Um.
And I think with a lot of new leaders coming in, you know, and we have some retirees this year with new leaders coming in. It's always good to address this with the first selectmen at these meetings as well, because it's important for us to know what's going on with the collaborative.
Absolutely.
You know, with the shared, the shared equipment. Because when we put that together, you know, it's changed a lot since then and DPW has changed a lot since then.
Yeah, in fact, another thing that we could probably do, just thinking through this, is we could have, um, you know, um, at least quarterly report to this group from, from the collaborative. Um, you know, just to, to make sure everything's working properly, um, bring it up with all of you. So we'll, we'll get there. I know, I know we'll get there and thank you, Tom, for bringing that. We will definitely sit down with you. I'd be happy to do.
Thank you. Yeah, and since we have time, I'm, I'm gonna bring back the broadband issue, the fiber issue.
Sure.
Uh, what I would like from the individual towns is I know that you're, a lot of towns are getting wired by one of your cable providers with fiber optic or with Frontier coming in. But what we're finding in a lot of towns is where they had promised to give universal coverage. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, areas that are not being covered. And if I could get some feedback from you, you can send it to Robert, you can send it directly to me. I would like to get some feedback on who is, who has areas in their town that are not being covered by fiber optic. Because I think that's an opportunity for us as a group to try and get some of the state money to cover those areas that are not covered uh, in our individual towns, uh, at once. And the reason that I'm big on this, uh, and I, I know that I have harked on this to, uh, the end and back over the past few years, but uh, there's a tremendous safety issue in our area. Because if you get in a road accident or you have somebody that has a heart attack and they are in an area that is not covered by a cell network, which a majority of our hill towns are not do not have cell coverage, uh, through the whole town. It is a major safety issue. And the only way that you can handle that safety issue, it doesn't work with towers. First of all, everybody hates towers. Especially the weekenders. But you need to have a fiber network that covers the majority of your town so that you can install cell, small cell antennas. Has to have a fiber network. And it's a real safety issue in, in some of our areas. There, there are out of our forty-five miles of road, there are seventeen miles of road that get no cell service. So if somebody gets in an accident on those roads or, uh, something happens, uh, as, as I said, when, uh, from, to when all the landlines came down. Uh, somebody in our town had a heart attack and they, his wife had to drive to the center of town to get a cell service. To, uh, call to get an ambulance for her husband and taking to the hospital and and some towns aren't getting anywhere. And I need to know that too. Because we've got to do something in this region. It's, and for economic development, it's a huge issue. Because, uh, there are a lot of people that have remote work and, um, if we can't sort of, uh, supply them with a mechanism to utilize, uh, their home for remote work. We're losing a lot of, uh, people. So I just wanted to bring that up.
I'll just add to that, that I believe it was a unanimous issue, um, talked about at our SEDS, our Economic Development Strategy meeting yesterday, that, that's a huge issue and, um, weakness in the area that we have so many areas that are uncovered. So, um.
We got ninety percent of our town is covered.
Yeah.
So, but it's the ten percent. And those are usually in the rural roads in our area that are most capable of development.
Warren, Warren, similar to you, Henry, you know, your example, I had an example with a motorcycle accident and a woman had to leave the scene. Drive to get reception, called it in and where she drove to was actually a different town. So it delayed response even further and dispatched the wrong emergency services, which was fine, it worked out. But, you know, and Warren, Sarah can back me up, we lose power quite often. And, you know, we lose everything. Um, if we lose cable, you know, you, you call up the cable and they're like, well, unplug and replug in and, you know, did you try? Like, you don't understand, I can't call you. We don't have cell service. I have to leave the house, drive somewhere before I can call. So it is a major concern for, you know, our rural community. Looks like we could have two players. We're still waiting for the play out between Frontier and Optimum. Looking forward to having a, a competition based for Warren. Hopefully it'll, it'll really work out. Um, it's slow moving for sure. Just trying to get marketing information at times is a challenge.
Well, it, it's just, it's, uh, it's, it's an issue for our area. And cell services to me. You know, everybody, cellphone usage issue back was, everybody has a cellphone now. I'm, I'm, almost everybody has. And, uh, if they can't communicate when something bad happens. We've got a lot of trails in our area that aren't covered, um, a lot of trail wanderers. I fortunately found somebody, uh, uh, walking, wandering through the woods that was lost. They couldn't get a cellphone coverage. They didn't know where they were in their, uh, mapping service on their phone, didn't know where it be for.
Henry, to your original point on mapping, um, I, we do hope with some of the extra funds that the cog is getting for planning, um, in this fiscal year, that we will be able to hire some GIS help. Um, and so that would help with that for.
Uh, GIS doesn't, doesn't help if you can't get a signal on your cellphone.
No, I mean, just, um, ma- mapping.
Know where the hell I am.
Just meant with mapping the areas that are.
Yeah, uh, anyway, that's, that's where I'm coming from, um, on this issue. I just think that universal coverage is really important. This, there's nothing else.
It's Jean on, on, so my one question, we have a, a person on our conservation commission down in Kent, who, her name is Wendy Murphy, and she is very interested and has said that she contacted the cog about trying to get the cog to fund a regional energy, sort of energy czar position. Have, have, has anybody heard from her at all?
Um, I'm sorry, I think I, was that Jean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, an energy czar for the region?
Yeah.
So, and that was, was that a member of your community? Is that what you just said? I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of what you first said. But I did have a phone call, yeah, from a, a woman, I think, was on one of your energy committees. Is that right?
Yeah, she's on our conservation commission, and she has sort of spun up a little task force of her own, working on different energy.
Yes, we did have a really great conversation. I think it was a couple of months ago, and I have reached out to some of the contacts that she gave me about funding. So it's coming along. Yeah, I can have a separate conversation with Eugene about that if you'd like to.
Okay, yeah, and I just wanted to sort of get some visibility with the other member towns on if they're interested in, you know, coming, pulling together to find somebody similar to Leo, but on the energy side, that might be able to help all of our towns with this.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Twenty minutes.
Oh, it is, okay. Be setting up.